Thereafter, I will explain how the program is going to run. For us to start officially, we are going to sing the national anthem and I request that we all kindly stand on our feet. We will also humbly request that as men, we remove our heads, please. Thank you, thank you very much, once more. Before you is the portfolio committee on transport. From the National Assembly of Parliament in Cape Town. We are here to hear your views as it relates to a bill before us called the Rail Safety Bill. My name is Lisa Mangu. I'm the chairperson of the committee. I will introduce my colleagues now. I will start on my extreme right, that is the honourable Ramadua. Next to her is honourable Nolu Chungu. Next to her is honourable Seisholo. Next to him is honourable Kumalo. Next to me is honourable Hon Singa. Next to him is honourable May. Honourable Situl. So, as I said, this is the portfolio committee on transport. Which is a multi-party committee. For the purpose and duration of our session here, we are in Parliament. What is going to happen is that after this introduction, I am going to sit down and introduce to you at a high level the bill that is before us. After I've finished, I will invite yourselves who we have come to listen to, to talk to us. Few things that I want to clarify. We are not here to engage into debates or answer specific questions. We are here to listen to you. Regarding the Rail Safety Bill. Two things that we would like to hear from you. What are the things that you think we should include in this bill that will improve it? The second thing, what are the things that you think we should change or even totally remove from this bill? If we cover those two things, it will be very, very fruitful. My other request is that we do know that as communities, we've got a lot of challenges. However, we are not here to resolve or even to tackle those challenges. So we request that we resist the temptation to raise other issues that do not relate to this bill. When your opportunity comes to speak to us. You will be directed to where you will speak. We request that you limit your input to a maximum of three minutes. In your three minutes, we request that you introduce yourself. You tell us the organization you represent, if you represent any organization. At the end, after you have given your input, you indicate whether you support this bill or you do not support it. You will also be free to express yourself in the language of your choice. Also, I humbly request that we listen or allow those people who are giving inputs to give their inputs without interrupting them. If you are not comfortable to speak in public, it is not all lost. We have got a very capable team on my extreme right, left against the wall there. There are two things that you can do there. You can ask them, tell them your views, they can write it down for you in a form. Or you can request a form and write those inputs yourself. Lastly, you can ask for an email and at a later stage, you can still submit your written inputs and submit it by email. So that is how we are going to run the meeting today. So we are going to start now and I'm going to request your indulgence that I sit down as I give you a summary of the bill. As I said before, the bill before us is a rail safety bill. By its nature, it is about rail and it's about safety. It is not a new piece of legislation, but it's a legislation that seeks to improve on an existing act of Parliament. The current one is the National Rail Safety Regulator Act. I will then take you clause by clause of this bill before us. If I skip any clause, it doesn't mean you may not input in that clause. So I start from clause one, clause two and clause three. These three clauses deal with the introduction, the definitions and the purpose and object of this bill. Excuse me. And from clause four, it gives provision that the Minister of Transport may, under certain conditions, approve exemptions as regards the application of the act. Clause five, clause six and clause seven. They deal with the transition, once this bill is approved, from the existing act to the new piece of legislation. Also emphasizes once more the objects of the Rail Safety Regulator. And it also deals with the functions and powers of the Rail Safety Regulator. Clause nine, clause ten, clause eleven and twelve. It gives the process or what are the, yes, the process of appointment of board members. Up to clause twelve, it deals with the process of appointment of a chairperson and a deputy chairperson of the board. Clause thirteen, fourteen and fifteen. It also gives powers to the minister on entering into contract with board members. Also clause fourteen describes the functions of the board. Clause fifteen deals with conditions under which a person can be disqualified from serving as a board member. Clause sixteen, seventeen and eighteen still deals with the functions of the board. That they can establish subcommittees to do their work. How often they can meet and all such things. From clause twenty up to clause twenty-two. Deals with the appointment or the process of appointment of a CEO of the Rail Safety Regulator. Clause twenty-three deals with the functions of the CEO. So from clause twenty-four. Clause twenty-four deals with the appointment of staff of the Rail Safety Regulator. Clause twenty-seven deals with the funding or funds of the Rail Safety Regulator. It allows that the Rail Safety Regulator may raise monies through other means, other than the money they get from Parliament. Clause twenty-nine provides that the Rail Safety Regulator reports to the Minister and Parliament. Clause thirty makes provision for a processing of application for safety permits. And also guides the Rail Safety Regulator on what to do in approving or declining such applications. Clause thirty-one makes provision for conditions under which a rail safety permit may be issued. Clause thirty-three deals with the process under which a safety permit holder may surrender their permit. The Rail Safety Regulator, also in clause thirty-three, is given a guide of powers to suspend or revoke a rail safety permit. Aye. Clause thirty-four deals with a safety framework under which the regulator can control safety on rail. It also gives them. The power to oversee that framework which they would have created. Part of this is evaluating and registering of training institutions. Alright. I was saying one of those is evaluating and registering of training institutions. Clause thirty-five provides for the evaluation of training institutions by the Rail Safety Regulator. I jump to clause thirty-eight, which authorizes or grants authority for the Rail Safety Regulator that they must establish a consultative forum. Clause thirty-eight proposes that the Rail Safety Regulator must establish a consultative forum. Where the Rail Safety Regulator and operators can, on an ongoing basis, consult each other. Clause forty-one is a clause that talks about safety inspections. Forty-one, aye forty-one. As a means of enforcing compliance with safety standards. In other words, clause forty-one provides for the appointment of suitably trained persons as rail safety inspectors. And for the use of certificates of appointment to identify such persons. Identify themselves. Clause forty-two up to forty-six deals with the powers and duties of railway safety inspectors. Clause forty-two to forty-six deals with powers and duties of rail safety inspectors. So clause forty-seven describes the powers of a rail safety inspector to deal with unsafe conditions. Clause forty-eight describes the duties of an operator immediately after a railway occurrence. Clause forty-nine places an obligation on an operator to report a railway occurrence to the Rail Safety Regulator. Dis outsi ba ke, I will jump to clauses fifty, clauses fifty-one. These two clauses deal with the powers that are given to the minister to determine which. to determine which incident on rail must be investigated as a major investigation. And fifty-one deals under which conditions or he can then prescribe that investigation. Amagaja ke sumamaltano, nama sumamaltano na anye u fifty no fifty-one. Anza amandla, ranika umpatiswa amandla okubana abo nubana le siiselo sikaloliwe. Sifunuba sifune nokwa bandwa bangati, basa osi peña okanya basikangele uba kakla kakla kwenze kenduni. And dizautsibake, ndiyeku clause fifty-four to fifty-six. Like any other piece of legislation, there would be people who are not entirely happy with one thing or the other. Clause fifty-four to fifty-six provides for an appeal mechanism in such incidents. Na yo no pinumteto, kuba kwa bandu abango nelisekaanga, gezindu esenzekayo, taku senziwa okanya ku implemento umteto. U clauses fifty-four to fifty-six, unika ke indlela apo umtu onganelisekaanga, anga bena ngayo, kulondo anganelisekaanga ngayo. I jump to clause fifty-seven and fifty-eight which provides for offenses and penalties. Clause fifty-eight provides for the employer, okay, let me start with fifty-seven, I'll deal with fifty-eight alone. Clause fifty-seven and fifty-eight provides for offenses and penalties. Na opino umteto, fneku be nawama zinyo uluma, uba ngaba uyenza ngidwe tile uzagoshwa yo kanjani. U clause fifty-seven no fifty-eight ke ba adila kanyenosezoshwa yo, uba washwaye luandoni, washwayo akanga kanani. I will jump to clause sixty-one which deals with the minister's general power to make regulations and provides for consultation and notification process. Lomteto kulapapamkuetu, ekribele ni uzabango ya namteto opambi li, or the Act of Parliament. Na opino umteto, ubana masolo cha obana o okanyi regulations, ezenzubana zekauleze zibenokchiinchoa, taku fneka zichinjiwe. U clause sixty-nine ke, I mean sorry sixty-one, unika umpatiswa wezotuto lomagunya. I jump to clause sixty-three to sixty-five which empowers the minister to make regulations concerning infrastructure or activity affecting safe railway operations. Ukwa fana no clause sixty-one nobenitetenga, onika umpatiswa kwakona. Amanyama lungu lo kwenza ez regulations, okanya masolo cha, angame ne, ne infrastructure, okanya umzila kaloliwe, nezindu eslapo kololiwe. U clause sixty-six authorizes the minister to prescribe fees payable in respect of certain matters provided in the bill. Ukubake kukuisindo ez ikulomteto oyilwa yo olapapamkuetu. Ezifunuba abantu babene male abai kupha yo, ukubakwenze kindwe tile. Lo clause sixty-six, unika umpatiswa wezotuto, amagunya, okubana achwa kubana ukwenze kindwe tile, ne kindwe tile uzabatala okunga nokunga. I will jump then and go to regu- clause sixty-nine. Clause sixty-nine provides for transitional provisions. U le clause ke orel solo cha lingu sixty-nine, lilungisela la landobe diite hapakuyo ekraleni yokubana ukono umteto koyo. Osebenza yonguku, kodwa longo kuyilwa yo sizanao. Uzamu kuvaliske u ez bonakale klomte to koyo, okanyu lungi sindu estile, ngakumbinezo siza uzivakuni. Taken ngukusuka umteto koyo usiya konyo umteto. Kuba kufneki nobana kunga biko kuphasamiseka, kukusebenza, kuelizeko orle entity city rail safety regulator. U clause sixty-nine ke ngoko, ulungisela la landoba, kunga biko ukunga sebenzi kakule, kwenze geledo city is smooth transition, ukuya kumteto mcha. U clause seventy proposes the repeal of the National Rail Safety Regulator Act. Kwakona ikrinisisa u clause seventy-eight, lendobe seni chilo okubana, uba parliamente no mongameli bayavuma. Uba lomteto ngoku pamkuetu ma ukriniseki swenjenkumteto. Uzautige ngoku lomdalabe diitetanga, ositi ke wana ausasebenzi, gezilungu kutwe u repiliwe kusebenza omcha. Clause seventy-one is a more technical issue, it provides for the short title and the name of this act. If it is passed, this bill we are dealing with, once it's passed into an act, it will be called the Rail Safety Act. U clause seventy-one ke endikribelanga ay. Uyakrinisi si sake ngoku okubana, ukubanga balomteto sekelupamkuetu. Uyavu nyazizindu zombie, nize parliamente no mongameli, auninisi subama ukubake. Lomteto uzagubizuwa ngoku ba ye Rail Safety Act. Okua ngoku esina umteto uti Rail Safety Regulator Act. Uba ukasisi wege lomteto sekelupamkuetu, ela gamalokralalizupinda libeko, kuzao sejenzi kameleti Rail Safety Act. Dizautela apoke banda kuetu, I will end there. And I am sorry about the glitches in translation, ndiyakolise la, ea ma kingla, kingla besinawa, abesiza mutoliko. Inobake kuba insasa bandbe bekawleza ngoku, njemandisatoligele, basa osela manzingoku, isbilini zehle. Basa okwazu tolika ke ngukakla ubeka pambi. Siza utata ngukwiza ndla, smame lapo kun.
We'll take hands and listen from you.
Jenkwa penchilo, siza utata izandezilshumi ya klas.
As I said before, we'll take ten hands at a time.
Siakela uba kauza ngapambi lituba lakolfiga lokheta, osazisuba unubani. Unombo to omele yo na ukubanga ba ukona.
When you come in front, you have to introduce yourself and you say if you have any organization that you're representing.
Sa ukela kuba, usinigeke izimvo zako, mvankoko, sibe nokwazu ba uyaukasa na lomteto sekelupamkuetu okanya au klas.
Please give us your views and tell us if you support the bill or you don't.
Ogokribela ndiyakela kwakona, ogokwana umto nga uyatecha, noba simtandi, okanyu tedindu esngaitandiyo, simnige ituba simame.
Lastly, I would just like to ask you humbly. If someone is in front, even if you like the person or don't, just listen to the person until that person finishes to speak.
Ndiyakela kwakona, ogokribela wana, singa lulekui mi zuzemi tatu.
Please don't speak more than three minutes.
Diglungu lo tadi zandla.
I'm ready to take hands.
Tandi tadi zandla sakon, digunika inombo lo, kela upaka muse, upaka adikuizutulez koyo, uzalala paya ke sipaka mekweza zutu.
When I point at you, I will give you a number, you will come and sit at the chairs in the middle.
Masbon ba, bakona banda wafunu teta na.
Let's see if the people want to speak.
Right at the back, um number one, buddy, unesportesi blue. Apa ngapambi le kargo butilo, um number two. Right when upaya, buting number three. And isama ubone, number four. Yes, number four, yeah. Any other taker? Alright, we will, number five, let's come buddy. Alright, alright, alright. We will, we will go ahead with that five.
Zonkube kare na abatlan.
I know that that first five will give you a lot of ideas.
Yes, ge ababatlan no, kubasawunensba ni kute ngani.
We can start when the number one is ready.
Maluni, singokelisa, ndasbulisela, ngokelisa upanga pambi. Dizbulisela, kwe community, engapagaati, kulendru yetu ye parliamente. Okokaala, ndibuluna izindulunus kahulmeende, azatileyo for ti nabantu basueleyo, msanzafrika. Abandaba lapala pagati ke sistanazu isi. Esi ikutazayo, ingobo, kahulmeende, nemunoenu, namapupa, etu. I say thanks God, kuhulmeende, ez e, ishe parliamente, isoba lapaguti ezanzi. Isoba, izimvo, zetu. Mandiza zeseke, ngoo izmo ondijonieko, from ASMO, Quad Four. Ilunuo kune African National Congress. I'm a member of EPC, a regional member, a branch executive, ASMO, Quad Four. Eh, dizoparamisage, nogu vesa. Andoba ufinme duetu, unayo, injabe, yokusimamele, ez e, kumuti apa ezanzi on the floor. Uli vela ge uko netu, enzeka ama popa. Namshaji sizo imangwa talalapa, sichonga no nengokele, sizo kunitrae esa. Okokaala, impuno, na kame true ring, or translate. I think libaneki ile kuti, nogusu sa ikati ez eku. Number one, ni animplo. Two, ukusonde la, kuhutlenzi, kuti kue area zetu. Sishala geti la, ku town is no farmer. So kuzabaluna endoba, sugutalanisitranzka, kuhulu orange, no farming, siya transporta yu orange. Siya transporta ingomo. Ne tourist, zazi ambagela klasa kwa kfu tu, na kuamba itrain. Na wama tuba yu misedense, azakwela. Takuvela ikandenu, kame true ring, itilando le yakuti, nogu wakuwatuwa njala. Ngoba singabafa ma akasa yo, adetagala yo, angenas transporta, ishi no transporta ezondu zetu. Siyane mama kapechu nipoona, asikwazu asa kutunupenzi ngapaya. I say ke ngoku, takusonde la kanti, umetrowenu, nogu, titimba famba, sangeti seka kakulu. Dabunel, I say thanks.
I greet you, Chair and your team and the community. I am Osmont Yegor and I represent Ward Four of the ANC. First, I would like to thank the proposal from government and in particular for us poor black people. And as people, we support these initiatives and we thank God that you came. We support the issue of metro rail and it will mitigate poverty and eradicate unemployment in our community. It will be easy in particular for us developing and underdeveloped farmers in respect of transportation. I must indicate that many of us are indeed developing farmers and we are inundated with transport problems. So I thank you that you came. Thank you.
Thank you. Manbulele, ikama ngomasole Tugani, ku ward councila walewa tsi kui ward twenty-one, Apa Ramon Mshabo. Okwam, kokwe presentation ya kota ndibambela nda oye safety and security. Kule area sekuiyo, itrain inobaya inemi niyake mi elishumi nga sa. Itike lo ndo isporo, ibiseenda oyo uamba bandu ne zilwanyan, nemfuyo yetu. So, ayo nandobe zautlinisa kuiyo, pamku oku basitule na kuspinas stage, masenza shoba. Lamaiti inguakusela yo, uba abantu bangangi, ne zilwanyan, ne zinfuyo zetu zangani, esporuin, aya voselalu. The worst part ke ngoku ba, ewatinia, msi ngumlapaga atiku ezindu, isporo is. Utika kuveli train baba leke bo, ngabandwa ningati bafune obona len tabaya zubungosba. So maskleini seklando ye fencing. Okusmi ini sikusstage ngoku apo, si voselaluwa yo, isporo, bukida obezmosha keli. Kufakwa ipali, kufakufa ipra, kukalewa ma. Es stage ke si sensitive, kuba nabani na osexiale, nuchonge utamla. It's either through each opportunity so kai business. Kumpa aponje kwa baba chonge ne na lo, na lo nkuu bo, yoku create kwa kumisebenzi. Ba, ba besensitive kakulu, ekuvese na ma tuba missebenzi, balande le inkuu bo ez fanelikleyo. Ukuzebanga folicikuitrep, ye politik, politik dynamics ya zowalonda. Okanya kungamo shakali inkuu bo, ngai ngai, ngalande lokomikom, i protocol ma ilande. Okostad, dikwengbake ngoku, dinetemba, uba mvankwa yelo ngelendo, ikala duktwa i social responsibility. Asiso obona ngetrain ibanisula, noko sikoni zindu sa uzikomba city. Vvankwa kuvoselaluwa, lemizila kaloliwe, na siya iskolo si benefitile, mshambesine waifa. Okanya si fakasi kutengalo ya bandwa ni uniform, njalo njaa. So sizi ndu mwenela uzaparamisa ezu, tabule.
Greetings to the parliament. My name is Masole Tugani. I'm a ward counselor in Ward Twenty-One, Ramon Mshabo. I've heard about, as we were talking about the bill. I heard about safety and security, it has been a long time since our railway station has not been working. And I feel that there must be fencing over there and because it has fallen off. I believe that it will help us that you will revive it again because the cattle they're grazing. And the children, when the train comes passing through, because the railway line is in the middle of the houses. So they will come seeing, getting excited, getting excited at the train passes. As the train, that is, the trains are being brought back, I would love our communities to benefit from it, like getting employment. And when employment is being given, would love for you to make proper procedures to employ people. to employ people. After this, I, I hope we'll see the train passing and will be heavy maybe Wi-Fi and children at school may benefit from it. Thank you.
Eh manbulisana ngo kola anikya nje. Eh upoma pana ya kawatfo esimo mpatu apa. Eh che mankale ngala point buteta ngayila be kribelin xabi libaligili uba xambige lepili mandi amkele lepili mna kala, mankala apoglunda. Eh andina mbozo kodwa nje ndifuna nje utkakusela.